Please call the meeting to order. Please rise to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is an open meeting of the Seward, Nebraska governing body. The city of Seward divides by the Nebraska Open Meetings Act in conducting business. A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is displayed on the north wall of this meeting facility as required. Disclosure of meeting recording processes is posted in the meeting room. A participant's sign-in sheet is available for use by any citizen addressing the council. Presenter shall approach the podium, state your name and address for the clerk's record, and are asked to limit remarks to five minutes. All remarks shall be directed to the mayor, who shall determine by whom any appropriate response shall be made. The city of Seward reserves the right to adjust the order of items on this agenda if necessary, and may like to take action on any of the items listed. Please call the roll.
Please give.
Here.
Beck, here.
Here.
Chris.
Here.
Pike.
Here.
Singleton.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Anne.
Here.
I just, um, so everyone knows, we have a, a new city attorney this evening who's helping us out, and this is Christina Usher.
Correct.
From the same firm, Matt's Richards.
Yes.
Thank you for coming this evening. First item this evening is consideration of approval of draft minutes of December 2nd, 2014.
Of approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second is going for discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Letting a fairer motion, Hans Schmidt, Singleton, Pike, Chris can't object, it's a motion.
Alright, item number two, consent agenda consideration items.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, yes, Charles?
I'll be abstaining from the vote on this, there is a line item to my employer.
So we have a motion and a second is going for discussion. Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Letting a fairer motion, Hans Schmidt, Singleton, Pike, Chris can't object, please give statements.
Item number three, this consideration of a resolution amending the redevelopment agreement with the Seward Hotel Group LLC property, Cobblestone Inn. Andrew, welcome.
Mayor, council members, Andrew Willis, Klein Williams, thanks for having me. This, uh, this issue was brought up, uh, back in, it was, uh, about March 2012 when the hotel project was, the redevelopment project was approved. After that, uh, the lot was re, the project site was replatted. They sold off a sec, uh, one lot of that ended up going to the Big Cobb project. Anyway, this came about when they were gonna sell off a new lot. Kind of, at, at CRA level, really needed to do the analysis to make sure this did not affect the TIF, the, you know, the financing piece at all. We went through that, we looked at it, we had a, with a CRA meeting on the 10th, and ultimately, hopefully we're just bringing just a kind of a housekeeping issue to you guys tonight to clean up the redevelopment agreement. We, uh, they're, they're trying to sell off Lot 3A, um, on the, on the replatted area. The hotel is all on Lot A, so this, this is really excess ground. We went back and looked, when we, when we sold the piece of the, when they sold the piece to Big Cobb, and we amended the notice to divide with the county, so really, all the excess tax increment is coming off Lot A, so this does not affect the property at all. However, uh, we need the CRA consent, and then have the, the city council approve the redevelopment agreement amendment, just to clean up the legal description. So, uh, on the 10th, we had a meeting with CRA, they approved this, and we'll bring it to you for final approval. I'm here to answer any questions.
And, just to be clear, the, the CRA level, the, was there, the vote unanimous?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, and we, and so we went through, and really, ultimately, I mean, we looked at the notice to divide, it really only divides on that Lot 1A, so everything else was kind of cleaned up at, at the big, when we did the Big Cobb project, this just, but, in the redevelopment agreement, it requires consent to, to sell off any piece of the property that's part of the project site, which this is still, even though there's nothing built on it. And so, it won't affect the value at all, and so the CRA approved it, and, uh, yeah, consented to, consented to the sale and approved the amendment.
Great. Any questions?
Yes, Chris.
Anything left out there, Andrew, that we're gonna, could see this again, where there's gonna be?
The only thing left out there, all has, the, Lot 1A is the only piece left in the, in the redevelopment project at this point, and that has the hotel on it, so they won't, uh, so this is the only amendment that should happen.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Seeing none, now that asks someone to introduce the resolution.
Alan Ariza.
The resolution has been introduced and is designated as Resolution Number 2014-36. Would anyone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
Let's move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Letting a fairer motion, Fix, Pike, Singleton, Schmidt, can't object, please give statements.
Thanks, Andrew.
Thank you.
Next item number four, this is consideration of the resolution adopting the multi-juridicional hazard mitigation plan, John?
Good evening. Uh, by now you've probably had a chance to read through all 384 pages of the document. It's a pretty comprehensive plan. The basic lay is here to identify hazards, assess the vulnerability of these hazards to the community, determine potential losses, and figure out ways to mitigate the problem before you actually have them. The last time that we did this, uh, this, uh, book was in 2008, so this is an update to 2008. It's part of the NEMA and FEMA projects. If anybody's got any questions? I believe this time, we did add a component that wasn't in the last issuance, that being man-made disasters. And, uh, took into consideration, uh, animal husbandry, the problems that we would have if there was contamination or hazard, uh, induced into our, into our, uh, animal food points. But, other than that, it pretty much stuck to the regular disasters that we deal with, floods and smokes, blizzards and animal wounds.
Any other questions? Yes, Chris?
Just, uh, curiosity, since it's the first time I've, uh, seen this since the last five years ago I wasn't here. So, your, your table you have here, it says Seward County Action Items, and it lists out the items, the hazard that's being addressed, and we rate them as priorities high, low, and put timelines on some of this stuff. Who's responsible to follow up in where it says, uh, three to six months, something's supposed to be done that it actually got done? Because a lot of the project statuses say NS, which I assume is not started. C would probably be completed. I don't know what the other ones are. IP in process, I assume that's a good status.
My department fed all the information to the document people to be in, so it'd be my assumption that when it goes to the next stage, that it gets supplied by our department.
I mean, that's just my curiosity, who's responsible to follow up? And obviously, there's things in here that will come into play at budget time, if, if we're actually following the plan that was put together. If it's truly a high priority, and we say we're gonna do it in one year, you know, the example in here is the generators, and I know that's on our, in our current budget. That those are things that we put in there, I'm just curious, who's, who's the lead on making sure we follow the plan we put together?
Well, probably my department. It pretty much integrates into the comprehensive plan, towards planning and zoning and everything like that, so that would be the association, so that's the reason I would say it would probably come from my department, as well as myself being the public facilities director, and this definitely would affect all of our public facilities.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Otherwise, I'd ask someone to introduce the resolution.
I'll introduce it.
Okay. The resolution has been introduced and is designated as Resolution Number 2014-37. Would someone like to move that this resolution be passed and adopted?
So will.
Second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Letting a fairer motion, Beck, here, Chris, Pike, Singleton, Schmidt, can't object, please give statements.
We're gonna jump down here to item seven. This is consideration of comparability, RFP quotes. Wanting to?
We went out for quotes, uh, for conducting the wage and benefit comparability study, and we ended up with two responses, so we brought those to the city council a couple weeks ago, and the council asked us to go back out and see if we could get additional responses. So we sent that back out. There were, I believe, five, um, firms that Mr. Harding assisted us with in sending those quotes out to, or RFP quotes. And, as a result, um, we are, well, let me just go through. Uh, Mr. Essman responded with his. Sheila Shukai stated, due to the extensive request, she was, did not feel she'd have the time to respond, so she denied responding. Uh, Mr. Kreip chose not to respond. Mr. Otman chose not to provide a quote. And the BKD quote, we did have the first time around, he withdrew due to time concerns with tax season coming up. So we have one remaining quote, which is the same as what was provided earlier. Um, I visited with Mr. Barbara about this process, and Jack, I don't know if you'd like to offer some comments at this time?
Coming in kind of halfway through the process here, and I think, uh, there's places where we can get comparability numbers, and the fact that for the last two years, I believe it is, right Bonnie, that it had the full-blown, uh...
A professional service?
Yeah, professional services do it. I think it would be something that would be relatively easy for us to do in-house this year. It would just kind of be a continuation of previous ones. And I think the, um, information exists out there, although it may cost us a few dollars to acquire it. But I know at least one of the, uh, people that did not respond, probably would respond if we were able to just talk to her in, uh, you know, person to person, and say, you know, this is what we need to do, our report this year, to make any adjustments. And I don't think this year, you really need the full-blown thing, because you've already had it the last two years, and things don't change that much, especially now when the, uh, cost of living is not increasing significantly. I think, uh, probably should've talked to Bonnie about this before. But I certainly think that we can be able to do that in-house, and do as good a job, I think, as some of the other people would. Would ask, answer any questions if you have any.
Is there a deadline on this, when we're supposed to be done by?
In the employee handbook, it states that our comparability will be completed by December 1. Unfortunately, we were past that, so, um, is there a deadline? Yes, but...
As soon as possible.
Yes.
But it could be made retroactive, if it's done in January, it could be made retroactive. Any, any changes in the pay scale could be retroactive.
Yes, pardon.
Um, so Bonnie, do you think that your staff would be able to do whatever needs to be done in a timely manner?
I think...
I'm part of her staff on this, so...
Okay.
I'm, I'm confident that we...
With his help.
And I did, I believe the person Jack's referencing, I did personally speak with her, and she did offer to give some assistance if we needed it. She just couldn't do the full process like we were asking, so...
Well, it's, now, didn't we used to just do this once every three years, or something, on our own anyway? Or was it on our own two years, and then doing it? I mean, so, it's not something that we haven't done before. There should be some notes or something on how to do that, so...
No, I, I think that this is a good recommendation this time around, and, you know, it is more of an issue of, in the future, we, we need to do a better job, I guess, of, of, if we're going to do it in-house, and we make that decision sooner than later, oh, if you run up against this issue, now that it can't be addressed through retroactive, um, you know, adjustments, but it's cleaner if we can have this done before that December 1 deadline. So, if, if this is the direction the council wants to go, I think that would be fine. And then moving forward, we need to try to be a little bit, uh, more proactive.
So do we need a motion on this, or just...
I, I think we know what we need to do.
Yeah. Yeah, if we wanted to use an outside firm or contract, we would ask for a motion, but if we're doing this in-house, we will just do that assuming that that's the, the wish of the council, unless anyone has any other suggestions or concerns.
Might be good just to have a motion to that regard, so we can have it on the record, you think?
Sure. Go ahead, do it.
I'll make that motion. Yeah, that we do it in-house.
Okay. You have a motion to, um, prepare this in-house, and a second is going for discussion. Any further discussion? Take, yes?
So the, um, labor attorney that had suggested we go for an outside firm, because I remember that's because there's some changes in the law, or, for refreshment of memory, why was he, since we've done an outside firm the last two years, why was he recommending it?
I think the city administrator at the time was, was recommending that, and the labor attorney suggested, suggested that he could prepare what the RFP could look like, that was got sent out. But I don't know that that was actually, I'll, I can ask him, I don't know that it was actually his recommendation. Is there any other questions or comments? Otherwise, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Letting a fairer motion, Fix, Pike, Singleton, Schmidt, can't object, please give statements.
Okay, it is 7:15-ish. We will start with the first public hearing. This is, uh, item number five. Council to review a text amendment to the City of Seward Unified Land Development Ordinance, Article 15 CBD Downtown Seward Mixed Use District Maximum Building Height. And John, did you want to take this?
Yes. Basically, this came about by the result of the design of the jail. Now, we have a maximum height restriction of 45 feet, um, that has been here since I've been here, but it was also based on the extension of our ladder truck for fighting fire. Um, I believe we could work around this with the jail either way. The 52 to 53 feet structure actually measures to the parapet. But, at this point in time, I think it's a good time for us to look at, um, the possibility of changing, changing the ordinance to go to 60 feet. I contacted the fire department specifically, Mr. Mr. Singleton. We have a new ladder truck that will have a cap, a reach capable of 75 feet, so I don't see the problem, um, with being able to fight, uh, a building that has a 60-foot height limit, so that's one thing. The other thing is, in the last, uh, 20 years, the code changes have made firefighting a little bit different. Once you get up past the second floor, it's very critical, depending on the occupancy again, that they implement fire sprinkling to the building. And if you go to the third floor, it's mandated that you have standpipes installed into the building so that you can fight fire from within the building. Basically, it's an outside hydrant built in the building so that you can fight fires. So, with all this in mind, um, and looking to the future, I guess, uh, I believe this department would recommend that we would change the regulator table to 45 feet maximum height to 60 feet maximum height. Any question? Yes?
John, other requests aside from this project? Have you dealt with other requests for buildings of that height or higher?
We've looked at two other buildings, and neither one of the buildings actually came to fruition on this. As we're talking, I'm halfway through redoing the Unified Land Development Codes, and at that particular time, and I've already went through this, and one of my recommendations, when it comes to you, is that we change the regulator to 60 feet and all the... This particular one is just for Central Business District, but in all jurisdictions, all the zoning districts. So you'll be seeing that coming as well.
How tall is the courthouse?
I, I think it's somewhere around 150 feet to the top. And one of the concerns, I, I might say, that this is passed on the, uh, the two no votes and five yes votes, the courthouse kind of falls into a different area. We discuss the fact that we don't want to overshadow, shadow, uh, the effects of the courthouse, much the same way the state's done with the Capitol Building. That falls into a different area, it's all in a historic development district, and so there's different protections around that courthouse square. But we're raising it another 10 feet, and at the moment, that, I can't see anybody that wants to build that in addition to the building that we're, we can't use. It's only gonna be an eight-foot destination, because they all have parapets as well.
Sean?
We might bring up to attention that we do have one building, the ladder just gets to the, to the top, and that's a Concordia.
Concordia.
Well, and the reason I ask is just, not that I anticipate a number of three, four, or, or more storied buildings, but it does also, um, potentially impact the skyline, if that's something that people care about. And that's one of the things that happened with Lincoln and the limits that they put on. I don't anticipate there being an issue here, but, um, as far as the infrastructure needs, I mean, getting water, um, just using water and plumbing, that's not an issue or a concern at that height?
No.
Okay.
No, we have, especially in the downtown area, because we have a water tower right here, we have 65, 70 PSI plus, you can see it throughout the downtown area.
So the issues that came up, um, at the previous meeting, those were, those were, was there any other specific concerns that were raised?
None.
Okay. Uh, I'll go and take a moment to open up the public hearing portion of this. Would anyone from the public wish to comment on this item? Please come to the podium, state your name and, and address.
Mike Luby, 1889 Waverly Road, Garland, Nebraska. One of the main reasons for this particular height addition would be to allow, um, for additional jail floor clearance, mechanical systems, and also structural steel members, are three things that played a part in this, uh, additional height. I do have some pictures of the north, south, view, and the east-west, if you're careful.
Yeah, you can go ahead and pass those around, Mr. That'd be great, thank you.
The one is just a, an overall overview of the, of the lot and the building on it, and the other two are just side views.
Any questions for Mr. Luby? Otherwise, thank you very much. Yes, John?
With that much building space, Mike, do they consider water runoff on that building? Because, you know, you do have a lot of areas around there that's not used to that much of a water runoff building.
That's part of, uh, and buildings of this nature actually become part of the plumbing, plumbing component. Uh, they, they're required to discover system and collection system, and get to our, uh, storm sewer line. So it would not be a...
So they'll go right into like an urban underground construction?
More than likely. I haven't seen the plans, but that's typically what they do.
I mean, because that would be...
That'd be what we require, so...
Yeah, because I would think all the residents around there would be concerned about water.
Absolutely.
Any questions?
One thing too, that this, this structure will be built, and it will be torn down, so, probably it'll balance out pretty close.
Pretty close.
To, to roof, uh, square footage.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment on this item? Seeing no one, I will go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this item. Is anyone else from the council wish to comment, or have a question? If not, then I would ask if someone would like to introduce the ordinance.
I will do so.
Alright. An ordinance to amend Article 15 CBD Downtown Seward Mixed Use District, Section 11, Point 1501, Table 11.1502, Site Development Regulations of the City Unified Land Development Ordinance relating to site regulators, to amend maximum height requirements to provide for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form to provide for a time when this ordinance shall take effect. The ordinance has been read by title, and it's designated as Ordinance Number 2014-28, and the title is hereby approved, and a motion to dispense with statutory rule.
Let's move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Letting a fairer motion, Hans Schmidt, can't object, Chris, Pike, Singleton, Schmidt, can't object, please give statements.
Again, this is ordinance number 2014-28. Would anyone like to move that this ordinance be passed and adopted, it's read?
Let's move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall ordinance number 2014-28 be finally passed and adopted? Please register your vote. Please display the votes.
Letting a fairer motion, Beck, here, Chris, Pike, Singleton, Schmidt, can't object, please give statements.
We're not going to the ordinance on the next item, and I'll explain that in a second. So, in that case, this is the only ordinance this evening, it's only one final motion to make this ordinance a, uh, part of the permanent record. So, a second. Please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Letting a fairer motion, Hans Schmidt, Singleton, Pike, Chris, can't object, please give statements.
Thank you. Item number six, uh, as I mentioned, um, this is a public hearing, consideration of application to amend zoning from R1 residential use to R4 residential use, Lot 1 and 2. And, uh, this is the Seward Calachek addition, um, and that's 1766 North 8th Street and 707 Pinewood Avenue. In this notice, it, uh, did not state that there, there would be an ordinance a part of this. So what we're going to do is, we're going to do the public hearing portion tonight, and then in two weeks, we'll bring the ordinance, assuming that there is no other issues, and we'll do the ordinance then, at the next meeting. So, uh, John, do you want to kind of brief us on this?
Yes. Should have had a new packet. This, this rezoning involves a couple parcels located on the corner of Highway 15 and Pinewood, or Highway, or 6th Street, I don't even look at it. Um, it would be to the south of Pinewood, right now there's two residential structures involved there. Uh, within the next year or two, Mr. Spar, the owner of those two parcels, is looking to take down the parcel that, take down the residence that's facing Highway 15, and turn that into a parking lot and use the residence that faces, faces, uh, Pinewood as a dental clinic. This is not out of, uh, out of, uh, the ordinary, everything is located on the north side of Pinewood. It's currently, um, zoned as residential four, which allows for, uh, business district, and this is what we would need to have the dental district in there. R4 would allow us to do type B medical and type A medical. Type A medical is a medical building under 3,000 square feet, which people will be looking at here. It will come back to you, no matter what we do tonight, because it requires a special use permit for the occupation as well. So at that point in time, you'll be able to see the parking layouts, the entrances into the lot design, and the actual building itself, for the location. So, this is just to get the ball going, uh, to go from residential four to residential one to residential four.
We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing portion of this. Does anyone in the public wish to come forward and speak on this item? And please state your name and address on the record.
Jeff Spar, 2296 A Street Road, Milford. And, uh, as John said, basically bought both of those lots, so that in the future, if we decided we wanted to develop a dental office here in Seward, we look at that location as a nice location north, um, part of the Highway 15 corridor, basically.
I guess at this point, um, you've been through the planning commission?
Yes, the last week.
Yes, and what was the...
It was unanimous vote for.
Okay, were there any concerns, I guess?
There were none.
Okay. Do you have any, um, at this point, do you have an, an idea as far as plans, what this might look like?
I do not at this point in time. Uh, like I said, like John said, it's just right down to get the ball rolling. Right now, we're looking, with it being zoned R1, there's no option to do any of this.
Okay.
Uh, to zone to R4, which is what, uh, nursery home, the church owes in that area, or, or in R4. And, uh, you know, so that's basically what we're looking to do. And then it has a special use permit, which John said has to come back to you as I design a plan, get architects involved in all that stuff.
Well, and the reason I ask is, is that, that location coming off of Pinewood, is that, that's the house you're referring to that would stay?
What we're looking, yeah, we're looking at utilizing that, that house instead of completely demolishing it or tearing it down, to probably build to the south off of that. What we're looking, yeah, we're looking at utilizing that, that house instead of completely demolishing it or tearing it down to probably build to the south off of that. Basically utilizing, and I'm looking at that space being more of a staff lounge, office space, and then actually redesigning a brand-new building that would be the, the office itself as far as kitchen care, with an entrance coming in from the west, where there's already the driveway where that, there's a little yellow house on seventeen sixty-six North. Taking that house out completely and building a parking lot in that area, so we have that as a parking.
So you come in off the highway?
At this point in time, that would be the plan.
Okay.
And we talked about that in the, and we gotta talk with the state.
Yeah, that's the whole, that's not a, that's a whole other...
Yeah, that's a whole...
I wish you luck. No, they're, they're actually, they've been real good to work with. It's just one more...
It's just another hurdle, yeah.
You have to have to make sure that you, they're good with what you're doing. Any questions, I guess, if we're at this time? Otherwise, I'd ask if anyone else from the public wished to comment on this item? Seeing no one else, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this. Are there questions or comments from the council?
Of course, you can get more wet.
Otherwise, we'll go, like I mentioned before, we will, we will, we will do the ordinance portion of this at the next meeting. I believe you think we can do this time. Unless there's any other questions or comments. We'll jump down into, back to number eight. Jack, did you have words of wisdom to share with us?
Probably not, but I do want to tell the council that my feeling is you have a very strong group of people working for the city. Department heads are fantastic, they're easy to work with, and I think they all really care about doing a great job for the citizens. And that goes all the way down the ladder too, so I'm enjoying what I'm doing here, and certainly glad, and you saw some, gave you some confidence that I could step in here and, and help out, because it's, it's been a very, very nice and good experience for me to date anyway. I appreciate all you've done, thank you.
Could you, before you go, could you maybe just mention a few projects that are currently ongoing?
Well, one we talked about today that's kind of starting with the fire department, they've got a new system of putting information into computers for the Department of Health and Human Services. When you talk about Department of Health and Human Services, you think large, large department with a lot of regulations and things. And this is proving to be exactly that.
E-Narses, yeah, yeah.
So hopefully that will work out well in the future. Everything else, you know, I think it's, it started, it's continuing along, and I haven't seen any really rough spots at all. I think everybody's doing their job and taking care of business.
Any questions for Jack?
I might add, we did close on the CNG tip project law yesterday.
For the Ornell School property? Yes, John?
There is one more project that was out there for the department, and it was budgeted. And that was for the, if you could look into it, because Brett was supposed to be working on it, is the emergency stoplight?
And on the, the changers, the light changers, they, they some work on them.
You're working on?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
And I might add, there's one more thing, we signed an agreement with Great Plains Telecommunications. Great Plains has brought fiber optics in from the south, and they put in a hub behind Pizza Hut. Actually, it's a couple of hours closer behind the lumber company. And we signed an agreement to do a fiber ring. It's gonna be financed through LBA forty, twenty to two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars tops. We should put a fiber ring around the central business district for all the people in the business district to gain access to. And we'll be getting fiber optics into this building as well as city hall.
On his question, on the, the, the light switcher, what's your timeframe on that? Could you probably need an idea of what you're looking at for when that would be ready?
I, I, it's kind of a high-priority deal, so I'm been working on it, just, I'd like to get it done by January and install it.
And to get, to get a budget for the shit, that's, yeah, that'd be great.
It would pass through the budget, so I'm just working through the CIP on that one.
Because when you're doing that, you're probably gonna look at the squad car, or police cars too, because you're just adding a sensor to them.
Right.
Okay. Thanks, John.
They were not in the budget.
Nobody got ours.
I don't know if we had a motion to accept that, but...
But I have a comment.
Oh, sure.
You know, I know Jack stepping in part-time and doing what he can, and I know he's gonna do a good job keeping things moving. But as I would expect, a lot of things fall back on the department heads, and, you know, to the extent that they can provide us an update, since Jack is filling in part-time, it's not a forty-hour-a-week job, if the department heads could at least give some feedback to the council and let us know what's going on.
Yeah, and, and I'll talk with, I mean, I'm guessing a lot of the things you're probably interested in are gonna be more capital improvement-type projects, not the, you know, we bought a box of staples today. We can give it...
Only Bonnie, Bonnie.
Only Bonnie. So we could talk about, maybe have, maybe might be good enough, John, with, with Jack to do kind of update on the capital improvement projects, of where we're at on some of these, when they, when they're timely, but yeah, we should do that. We'll go and do, let's do a motion then to accept his report, just as formality.
Smooth.
Second.
The motion in a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Plenipotentiary motion, Hanschmidt, James Smith, Camper, and Schmidt.
I'm sure there are upcoming events, but I don't have any on my list. So as they come up, we'll let you know. What's that? What's extravaganza?
January twelfth.
Okay. There's an event.
And you're all invited.
You're all invited.
You're VIPs.
January twelfth, all extravaganza, that sounds fancy.
Yeah, snakes on the night is catering the shares.
Not a jubilee, though. That's something completely different. What's that? There's another event?
So weren't you invited to the governor's?
I give Vito lockers. Number ten, feature request for council to get items administrative action. Seeing none, then we'll move on to number eleven, John's favorite item. Would you like to make a motion?
Smooth.
Motion to adjourn. And second, please register your votes. Please display the votes.
Plenipotentiary motion, Hanschmidt, James Smith, Camper, and Schmidt.
Thank you.
When is the mid-winter conference?